5:01. At this time, I would like to call the meeting of the Belton Independent School Board, District Board of Trustees to order. A quorum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and a notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please rise for a moment of silent prayer or meditation. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the U.S. flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We're actually going to go ahead and go into closed session. Texas Government Code, Subchapters D and E, Personnel, Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, and Consultation with Attorney. We will be back as soon as we can. Thank you all for waiting on us. It is 6:21 and we'll open back up in open session. The next item on our agenda is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding naming of interim superintendent. We had a process in place where we interviewed three candidates, retired individuals. We are so excited about the opportunity to talk to these folks. And I will tell you, you know, the board has just been really thoughtful during this whole process, and I just want to thank you all for that. You all have been insightful, uplifting, and really appreciate you all for that. So our person that at this time, I will entertain a motion. It's been a long day, folks. It's been a long day. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to name Dr. Robin Batterhill from this community as our interim superintendent. Is there a motion?
I would like to make that motion.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Flore. All in favor of that, please raise your hand. Any further discussion? Any other comments? No. Well, we are excited to have Dr. Batterhill on our team. And, you know, we, Temple Belton, we're just right across the street from each other, and what a way to bridge those communities. And we're excited. So, moving on to our board workshop, which is the next item on our agenda, we'll have Jared talk to us about our 2017 bond and construction projects update. Good evening.
Good evening, board. How are you all doing this evening? Good. Well, I'm excited to be able to bring you a construction update here for the Belton ISD projects. Going to talk about three of the projects, just to kind of keep you apprised of everything that's going on here in the world of Belton, as schools starting, projects are finishing, and doors are opening for the first time. So, the first of which is Lake Belton High School. So, we actually had the opportunity to take 65 of our staff to go and walk around the project and really look at it here over the last week. So, it was a great opportunity for us to actually see the project in construction. And so, what we saw, as well as y'all saw last time, is that they're continuing to make great progress. Bart LaCock on the job. And so, you'll see general construction along the way, ultimately working towards closing down envelope and moving forward on the project. So, over the last month, starting from the site, you'll see that they're continuing to make steady progress on the athletic facilities. So, we'd seen where they brought the kind of turf and track system up, but haven't put those on. Now, you're starting to see those supporting elements, like the fence, the lights, the poles. Grandstands will be put in place here in the next week, week and a half. So, it's really going to start taking on the character of the final field. You'll additionally note there in the bottom right photograph, they've actually laid down the asphalt. That'll be part of the track system. So, all of these components are starting to take place on the site. As we move inside the building, the contractor has pretty much closed in the entirety of the project with the storefront system and the glass, to the point that over the last several weeks, they've been working through the startup process on the chilled water system, and they've officially turned on the air conditioning in the L wing, which is the classroom wing closest to High Point Elementary School. So, they're starting to condition the building, get that in place, and then march through all the way along the line. So, you see the pictures there of the dining commons, and they've got the glass there in place, the gymnasium, they're starting to work through paint and finishes. And then, actually, the bottom left classroom is more of what I'd call even the unfinished classroom. There's one in there that actually has all the ceiling grid, has the walls in place. Basically, all we have to hang is a marker board and put some base on, and it's ready to go to teach. But then, you see the center of the building, still a little rough there, got the admin building, or that's the admin section and the library, so that's the last little part where they were coming to knit together within the building. As we look on the outside of the building, you'll see that the finishes are starting to go in place. Most of the masonry is up in place after the third attempt now. We've gotten the right metal panel on the site, so they're starting to work through those. There were some issues with the rolling of the panels. That was a manufacturer issue. So, we're getting the right ones there onboard, and then ultimately trying to round out that courtyard and all the details of the project for the high school. We have brought in or gotten proposals. We had sent out documents at the end, or kind of a couple of weeks into July. Bart LaCock has submitted proposals on three items. That would be an additional auto tech facility, a greenhouse, and then also some additional sod for the project, switching out for hydromolts. We're currently in the process of reviewing those, and we'll be looking to bring those back to the board here in the next couple of weeks, once the district and us have agreed on the price, gotten a recommendation from Bart LaCock, and bring that to the board to review as well.
And that will be a change order when that comes to the board?
Correct. So, we would issue that as a change-
Just make sure you caught that.
Yep. Issue that as a zero-dollar change order to the project, net zero. There's some, there's construction or contractor contingency that they've returned a million dollars to the district already. There's some owner contingency and buyout savings. And we'll go through all those details when we bring that back to the board. So, some flashing details, some fun stuff that the architects look at, make sure that it's all going in right. On the orchestra addition, so this, we've been working a lot here over the last month, had brought this to you of actually collapsing the old portico that was in front of the building. And now, they've actually made quite substantial progress, one, not only in terms of construction, but then also to support the first day of school at Belton High School. So, the photos you see here are of actually the walk as you approach Belton High School. So, they've actually got all the flatwork poured. The bottom-left image you see is where there's going to be some, the Belton Bee and some words that we've started working with the district to be able to integrate into the paving, so every day, students can come and get reinforced with the culture at Belton High School. The contractors put in drilled piers and have started putting in the grade beams and utilities there in the area, so we're working through those details. That should come up. And then, really, over the last two weeks, have worked with the principal, with David Bennett, with contractor and ourselves, to work out how parents are going to come in and drive and drop off their kids on day one. Overall, it looks like it was successful. I drove by there this afternoon on pickup time, and so people are moving through the system pretty well, but be able to get them to route through and make sure that they can get in front of the building and then ultimately out near Lake Drive. So, continuing on there with orchestra. Any questions on that one?
I can't remember. I know y'all have given it to us before. What is the projected finish date on the orchestra project?
So, I would look at it as there's two dates. We've asked them to be done, or we've coordinated with the front entry drive. So, they've got the paving back in place in front, which really completed that loop, so we were able to get drop-off to work. So, that was the first major milestone. And then, as we look towards the future, really, then everything else becomes complete next summer. But it won't be until roughly June 1 of 2020 that they will be able to go in and renovate the band area of the building. So, we're going to maintain band the whole time during the year, and then during the summer do that last renovation to be able to finish, so the start of the 2020 school year ties in well with the finish of the project.
Jared, how's our timeline on the high school? We still good?
High school's still good. Bart LaCock is pressing ahead full steam. They, even though there have been rain days and those kinds of things really across the course of the project, they're generally on target with completion date. So, we are starting to talk about finishing the project. We're working with the district for furniture and when those delivery dates need to occur. So, as we get probably closer to the December timeframe, we'll be able to definitively say, here's when the sections of the building will be turned over. I don't want to promise any good news, but I have heard that things will be at or ahead of schedule, is the word on the street. So, then the last project, so we talked about orchestra, and then we talked about Lake Belton High School. Last one I wanted to mention was Charter Oak Elementary School. So, we got the last few details here. There's a few things that we're working on in the field. The hope is, or we're working with Dr. Muller to bring the final completion to the board at the next available board meeting. So, that'll be the final pay application. There'll be one change order that will net out to zero, so you get the owner contingency back. But we've got O and M. They worked through the punch list, and the last thing they really had to do is fix some of the PLAM walls in there. But the Charter Oak sign is up there. It looks really nice. We're working on a few details to be able to get the actual piece of the Charter Oak into the building and work through the details there on that one. So, that will be wrapping up here soon, and all said and done with final completion there.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Jared.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Next item on our agenda is the high school intra-district early transfer process timeline. The timeline, Mark Hagan.
Good evening. Look forward to having an opportunity to speak with you all tonight. This will be the first in a series of presentations outlining the transfer process, and tonight we will focus on the intra-district early transfer timeline of high school. To a quick review on the two kinds of transfers, you have intra-district transfers, which are transfers that from one campus to another within Belton ISD, and they're governed by policy FDB. The factors when determining approval for intra-district transfers include availability of space, special programs, and a student's disciplinary and attendance record and history. A resident student who becomes a non-resident shall be permitted to continue in attendance for the remainder of the semester. This year, we will have an early transfer application period for high school and middle school. We will take elementary applications in the spring as normal. Intra-district transfers are transfers from outside of the district, meaning students do not reside within Belton ISD attendance boundaries, and these types of transfers are governed by policy FDA. This policy also provides that the superintendent or his or her delegate manages the approval process. Intra-district transfers are approved only for one year, and applications must be made each year. Factors for considering the approval and denial of intra-district transfers are the availability of space and staff, and the student's disciplinary history and attendance records. Intra-district transfers will not be taken until next spring, on the normal time period when we do those, after all intra-district or in-district applications have been processed and we have processed enrollment data and staffing needs have been identified. We want to make sure that we're able, that we don't promise to accept more intra-district transfers than we can. We want to make sure we meet the needs of Belton ISD students first before we take out of district transfers. And I'll pause after each slide or so if we have any questions as we move. I wanted to give a quick review of the attendance boundary process, the conclusions that came. New attendance boundaries were adopted to best help the district utilize its resources prior to the opening of Charter Oak Elementary this fall and in the anticipation of opening Belton Middle School and Lake Belton High School in August of 2020. The administration worked closely with Templeton demographics and a committee consisting of parents, community members, teachers, administrators, and board members to study the new attendance boundaries. The committee met five times, beginning in the August of 2018 and concluding on January 7, 2019. Three public forums were also held to solicit community feedback on the attendance boundary maps that had been developed through the committee's work. The boundaries were submitted and approved to the board on January 14, 2019. The priorities that came out of that process was, number one, is that we needed attendance boundaries that would last at least five years. We wanted to keep subdivisions together to the greatest extent possible at all levels. We wanted to make efficient use of buildings to reduce overcrowding and not have empty spaces. We wanted to facilitate efficient transportation routes. We wanted to use natural boundary lines to the greatest extent possible, establish pure feeder patterns from middle schools to high schools. And also, the conclusions were that we were able to keep seven of the nine existing elementary schools together at the middle school. Shown here on the slide are the boundaries that were adopted for Belton High School and Lake Belton High School as a result of that process. We will have early high school intra-district transfer applications open in September 2019. And these applications will only apply to current eighth and ninth graders who will become the ninth and 10th graders in 2020 and 21. In this case, it would apply only to students zoned to attend either Belton High School or Lake Belton High School, and then wish to apply for a transfer to attend the other school. There will be no 11th or 12th graders at Lake Belton High School, so there will be no intra-district transfer opportunities for those students entering 2020. Students who will attend Belton New Tech High School at Wasco are not considered intra-district transfer students. Since New Tech is a specialty campus for Belton students, grade 9 through 12, enrollment is not bound to an attendance zone, and students are eligible to attend if they are chosen and apply and are chosen through the selection process. So, we'll look closer at the New Tech timeline later in this presentation. Once again, transportation is not provided for intra-district transfers at any level, but New Tech students will have BISD transportation available because of the uniqueness of that opportunity and the way the opportunities are throughout the district. One significant consideration throughout this process and throughout the transfer process has been developing policies that will facilitate compliance and transparency for UIL purposes. So, an important eligibility element to understand is that when you are talking about intra-district transfer students, since they do not attend the campus they're zoned to attend, they are not eligible for varsity competition for one calendar year without the approval of a parent residency waiver from the University Interscholastic League. So, for every intra-district transfer student that we approve, for that student to be eligible as a freshman for varsity competition, we'll have to go through the UIL waiver process, which is pretty substantial considering the amount of freshmen who potentially could be on varsity at the new high school. New Tech students will be eligible for varsity athletics at Belton High School, provided they enroll at New Tech at the first available opportunity, which for most of our returning Belton students, that would be at the beginning of their ninth grade year. Neither New Tech or intra-district student transfers may change schools after initial enrollment without the potential for UIL eligibility complications. Considering the priorities of the attendance boundary committee, local policy, industry standards, and the UIL considerations, the following expectations will be used as the criteria when evaluating high school intra-district transfer requests. The expectations will be that BISD students will attend the school they are zoned to attend, that sibling transfer applications will be considered, that policy FBD will drive the process, that request for non-duplicated programs will be considered, and a non-duplicated program is defined as a program offered at one comprehensive high school but not at the other, that grandfather requests will not be considered, that legacy requests will not be considered, and that transfer requests based on preference for a particular staff, campus, or a duplicated program will not be considered. In most cases, the transfer requests will fall into one of the above categories. As with the attendance boundaries released last January, which we did over 18 months before the start of school at Lake Belton High School, a transparent policy and transparent practices are important and respectful to all parties involved. This will give transfer applicants a full eight months to prepare once the early high school intra-district application and approval process has concluded, and these transfer expectations are designed to follow the intent of the boundary process and to minimize UIL eligibility oddities. Sibling transfer and non-duplicated program transfers would be among reasonable requests for a UIL waiver.
Could you explain the legacy transfer? Just explain that.
A legacy, and by our definition, would just be a request based solely on the fact that my grandfather was in the Marching 100, so I want to be in the Marching 100. So, that would be a complicated issue with UIL purposes for sure, because that wouldn't meet the criteria generally they would approve a waiver for.
One more. On the sibling transfer, right, so can you define that for me? I take that to mean, if I've got a sibling that's maybe a junior at Belton High School, but I would normally be, hmm, yeah, I don't know. Define that for me real quick.
That's exactly right. If, since there are no options for 11th and 12th graders to attend Lake Belton High School, if a family were to have a junior or senior at Belton High School and then an incoming freshman or sophomore at Belton, that was zoned to Lake Belton High School, they could request for the siblings to be at the same campus together. We don't want to split families up, because we don't have opportunities for 11th and 12th graders to be at Lake Belton High School.
You're all done? Any more questions? Comments?
We outlined in the important dates, once tonight, tonight was the initial presentation. We will send a Skylert out to all eighth and ninth grade parents detailing this process and the specifics, and we will have parent meetings, one at Lake Belton Middle School on September 3, one at South Belton Middle School on September 4, and one at Belton High School 9 on September 10. And then, we will open the enrollment process on September 17 through October 5, and we will process those, and on January 10, everyone for the secondary transfer requests, intra-district will be notified of approval or denial. I put a slide in here of the Wasco, New Tech at Wasco timeline. This timeline, just to show that it's almost identical to what we've done in the past, for anticipation of enrollment purposes, we know how many students we can accept at Wasco, and we have a several-year history of where those students come from, so we can anticipate the number of students that will be from each attendance zone. But the actual process of the tours and the presentations will take place in the spring as they always have. And then, here's a little, just some more detail that will go out to the parents, it'll be in the packet, on the actual dates and addresses and times for the parent meetings for eighth and ninth grade. So, this slide, my hope is that these slides presented enough information to understand the early process. We hope this process was informative, and every attempt has been made to be transparent, fair, manageable, and UIL compliant as we look at students moving forward, and we'd be happy to answer any more questions at this time.
So, let's go back to the UIL eligibility just for a second, right? So, I think it's worth making sure it's all clear for all of us, right, what that is? So, if we've got, you know, a student decides to transfer in their freshman year, right, one way or the other, right, there's only a certain set of criteria, well, one, we have to grant the, we have to grant the transfer, and then UIL has to grant the eligibility waiver so they could potentially play varsity their first year. And there's only a certain set of criteria that UIL even would consider, right? And do we know, kind of at the high level, which ones those are again?
Generally, the kind of the litmus test that the UIL puts to it for, that I've seen for guaranteed waiver, and they don't have just a definition that these are the ones we'll approve, and these, you can submit any-
Right, right. Now, I get that.
But they kind of look at it as, did that student, could that student have attended their school? Did they have no other choice but to attend this school?
Right.
So, for us, we could make a case for that in a sibling transfer. We could make a case for that in a non-duplicated program. Just because they like a certain teacher better or a certain director better would be a hard sell on a UIL waiver.
Right, right, right. Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay. Well, you guys did.
Thank you all.
Okay. Next up, we have our recognitions. Let's get started, Mr. Josh.
At the Texas Association of School Nutrition's 2019 Annual Conference in July, two Belton associates took top honors, receiving state-level awards. Pauline Seiler from Sparta Elementary was honored as the TASN School Nutrition Specialist of the Year after being nominated by her supervisor, Sam Guahardo. From South Belton Middle School, Penny Bolin was awarded the TASN School Nutrition Manager of the Year following a nomination from Principal Kevin Taylor. They're also joined by School Nutrition Director Rob Pashisnek. Congratulations. Each year, TASB develops a media honor roll to recognize members of the press who make the effort to get to know the superintendent, board president, and the district's missions and goals, report school news in a manner that is fair, accurate, and balanced, give a high profile to good news about schools, visit the schools, and maintain a policy of no surprises by sharing information with school representatives. In March, the Board of Trustees nominated the following journalists for inclusion on this year's honor roll. From the Belton Journal, Tony Adams, sports editor. From the Temple Daily Telegram, Josh Weaver, sports reporter. KWTX-TV News 10's Chelsea Edwards. KCEN-TV's Amani Payne, an anchor reporter. KXXV News Channel 25, Olivia Levede. All journalists nominated by the board were included on this year's list, and this month, they are being represented with certificates from TASB, which recognizes their fair, accurate, and balanced reporting of school news. Here this evening are Tony Adams, Josh Weaver, and Chelsea Edwards. Congratulations, y'all.
Congratulations to all of you. Thank you so much for all that you do for us.
And on Tuesday, July 23, around 150 Belton ISD campus and district leaders, including principals, counselors, and art instructors, participated in a meaningful, hands-on team building day to connect district priorities and work objectives with the school year theme and mission of the district. The Design, Create, Build, a masterclass, was a full-day event hosted by the University of Mary Harden Baylor's College of Visual and Performing Arts. It included speakers and presentations at the Mayborn Performing Arts Center, lunch at the Balcom Student Union Building, and an afternoon of hands-on classes and a gallery walk at the BAU Center for the Visual Arts. There were nine classes, which were led by Belton ISD art instructors, challenging district leaders to embrace their creative side as they engaged in a variety of art projects, including paper quilting, watercolor techniques, and faux ceramic mosaics. Beyond efforts to plan for this special event and serve as the host, Dr. Catherine Faust, Dean of the College of Visual and Performing Arts and Art Department Chairman Herschel Seals, shared their unique skills and inspirational insights as performers, speakers, and facilitators throughout the day. For their contributions to this year's Administrative Team Building Day and their ongoing support of Belton ISD, the University of Mary Harden Baylor College of Visual and Performing Arts' Dr. Catherine Faust and Herschel Seals are this month's Big Red Community Partners. Congratulations. That'll do it for recognitions this evening. Thanks. Thanks.
Next item on our agenda is public comments. I have one that has signed up. Ms. Burns, is there more? Okay, before we get started with that, I would just remind you all that when you signed up, that you'll be limited to five minutes. And we can take no action, but we're certainly here to listen to you. So at this time, Natalia, you'd like to come and address the board? And when you get to the mic, if you could state your full name, please, and your address.
Hi, my name is Natalia Plans. I live on 528 East 28th Avenue in Belton, Texas, 76513. I'm a new I'm a new family here. We just got stationed here from overseas, Middle East. The reason why we chose Belton is because of my daughter. She swims. She's a sophomore, and she swims for varsity. She's only been swimming for two years, and she loves it. She loves her coaches. She respects her coaches. And right now, she's to the point where she's panicking because right now, I think there is some sort of chaos going on. And she comes home, she's worried. Like I said, she's been doing this for only two years. When we met the coaches, when we emailed them from UAE, from the Middle East, we were concerned because there was no other place that would offer swim club and swim high school at the same time. We had an option to go to Austin, but that would have been a far drive for my husband. Now, to find out that he's now deployed, it wouldn't have mattered. But I am really happy that we chose Belton because she's happy now. We've moved every three years. She respects the coaches. I respect the coaches. And I believe standing here helps represent them and give them, you know, the support that they need. I know coaches could be harsh. I'm a P, you know, I'm going to become a PE teacher. I've coached a few sports. We say things that we shouldn't say, but it's because we want the best for our kids because we know that some of these swimmers can do better than what they can. It's like a personal trainer. You put people hire you as a personal trainer because they know they can't push on their own. Not even family members could push them. They need that trainer to push you and to succeed and to get those times that you want. And because of these coaches, my daughter succeeded. You've got to remember, my daughter's been doing this for only two years. And for competitive swimming, that's nothing compared to people that's been doing it for five years or for since they were five. I just want you guys to know, the board, that the coaches, that I support the coaches, and I'm very happy that I we moved to Belton and chose Belton because of these coaches supported us on our way coming from UAE to here. They gave us calls. They emailed me. They answered our questions ASAP. They knew our situation. They knew my daughter's situation. Yes, they were harsh when they first met her. They said, this is not going to be easy. You're going to fail 10 million times, but it's how fast you get back up. And get back up, get back into swimming, and results will show. Results showed. She spent days and nights doing her homeworks, going to bed at 12, waking up at 5:00 in the morning to do her to do her training before the swim training, went to school, went to training after school, did homework, stayed up until 11, and succeeded, and broke record, finished in district really well, did regionals, did sectionals. She's this close of doing future. Why? Because we had a personal trainer, which is our coaches, to push my daughter, to push our students. You're not in varsity because you just pushed you just pulled a lottery ticket. You're in varsity because you were chosen to be because they know how committed you are. They need students that are committed. If you're not committed, don't do don't do varsity. You have another, you know, you have JV to do, okay? If you're going to be in club, do what you got to do. If you don't like it, and if you don't think you're going to succeed, this is too hard, go down a level. That's fine. There's no shame to go down a level.
You have one minute.
But the people, the people that go up a level, like my daughter, varsity and club, they they work hard. And this coach, I just want to support this coach. And I believe he should be standing here, she should be standing here and saying what he should he believes. And I think I'm standing here for him and for these coaches. That's I just wanted you to hear my voice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yep.
Looks like we have one more on the way. Okay, Randy, if you want to go ahead and take the mic, I would remind you, you have five minutes.
And I will give you a one-minute warning.
If you'll please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Randy Rodak, and I live at 1125 Frederick Lane, suburbs of Moffitt. Like Ms. Platt said, my daughter has been swimming at the swim center since she was six years old and back when Coach Burke was there. And so she's been doing this for quite a while. But and I understand coaches, like she was saying, you know, you try to get the most out of your athletes. That's that's your job as a coach. Get the most out of your athletes and to push. And I get that. And being a supervisor at the fire department is the same same thing. Get the most out of your crews. Guys don't, people don't call the fire department, you know, for a bunch of pranksters and stuff to show up or a bunch of lazy guys. You want, you know, professionals there. With that being said, my biggest issue with the with the swim and what's going on right now is is it's not physical abuse. It's not. What I would call it more is mental of what's going on there and what they put those kids through. I can, like I said, I can see being in the locker room and getting the most out of your athletes, but it's completely different getting the most out of your kids whenever there's when I drop her off at school at 6:15 in the morning, and we're getting home at 7:15 at night, and we're doing homework till midnight and getting stuff done. And she stays on the A honor roll and taking all AP courses. But whenever you have a health issue, and we get an issue, when we have documentation from sports orthopedics saying that she's got a shoulder problem back here, and the best way to do it is rest it or swim till you feel some discomfort and don't push that stroke. I'm just going to give you an instance. It was about October last year when we started having this issue. Went to the orthopedic. She got a series of five lantacane shots to try to numb that up a little bit and to help that muscle relax. And I went with her. The coaches always want the kids to do all the communication. I don't have a problem with that. She gave the doctor's excuse to Coach Henry. The next day at practice, I guess there was no communication amongst the coaches. I feel like if you're the head coach, that's that's your ship to lead, and you should know what's going on. At the fire department, we have monthly, I mean, we have weekly meetings where we talk about each thing that we have going on, issues we have going. So we're all on the same page. Well, the next day at practice, about halfway through practice, they were doing butterfly, and my daughter started. Coach Henry told her, whenever you start to feel discomfort, get the kickboard, start kicking. So she gets the kickboard, starts kicking. Coach Phillips comes over, screams at her, what are you doing? You're not the coach here. You've got to listen to what we tell you to do. And Kristen goes, she was trying to tell her Coach Henry told her to kick. She goes, I don't care. Swim through it. Keep going. And so she kept going. She called me, and she just couldn't take it anymore. There's about 15 minutes left in practice. She goes to the locker room, calls me crying. I'm fixing to leave the gym and go to work. So I showed up, and instead of addressing the issue, Coach Henry was more worried about, I cannot believe she called you from the locker room during practice. I might have to put that in the notes for next year about no cell phones in the swim center. Instead of and and the kids are told to come to your coach. If you're if you're injured, let us know so we can get you to the trainer. And this was after several requests. Hey, my shoulder is bothering me. Swim it out. Swim it out. Work it out. It depends on who you are, I feel like, at that swim center as to how you get treated. Granted, she's not the fastest, but she's not the slowest. She did well at districts. She made it to regionals. And I'm just saying, something needs to change. Like I addressed to Coach Henry at the end of the school year, if he had to work with a bunch of peers and adults on a regular basis instead of a bunch of kids, that you would be in HR for a hostile work environment, or one of these adults would meet you in the parking lot. That you need to have a different mindset about what goes on there. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Looks like we have a couple more. I just would remind you all that while we're happy to listen to your comments, we, as a board, cannot take any action this evening. When you approach the mic, if you will state your name and address, next we'll have Robin Maddox. And you will be given five minutes, and our timekeeper here will let you know when you have a minute left.
My name's Robin Maddox. I live at 6 Ringo Kid, Belton, Texas, 76513. And I first would like to just say, this is one of the hardest things I've ever done because, like Randy, my child has swam for this club and for the high school now for two years. And Leona's mom, Natalia, and I have become close friends. We really are like a very big family. And to come up here and to have to tell what I need to say, and I can say it in five minutes because I have addressed Coach Henry on a number of times, and I have gone above his head to his then-boss and to the school principal for about three hours. This is so hard because, as I'm sure a couple of the parents see him as one of the greatest coaches, and I'm sure at one time he was. But working with my child and several of the other children, he has not been a great coach to them. When my child can leave the swim center, walking to the 9, three days out of the week in tears, and then I go pick her up, and she's in tears because she's told that she sucks, excuse my language, or what am I going to tell your college swim coach? That you suck at practice and you're okay only some of the time at meets? Well, number one, he doesn't know if my child is going to swim in college. And if it's going to be based on her high school career, I'm going to tell you, she's not going to swim. I'm not a coach. I didn't do athletics when I was a kid. I was a cheerleader. So my job was to pump everybody up, to tell them what a great job they're doing, not to tell them that they suck and then walk away from them and not tell them how to correct what they're doing wrong. I have sat at that swim center. I have watched a number of kids quit and not swim their senior year or be thrown off the team because they didn't swim because they had homework to make up. I have seen it. I mean, if that doesn't speak volumes to the school board, to the AD, to the principal, that you've got seniors not going to swim their senior year, I don't know what does. To have a coach say that he's unfireable to his swim team because a kid felt so scared after completing a set, like he was going to drown and not be taken seriously, to the fact that he wrote to his counselor and it wasn't taken seriously? I don't know. That should speak volumes to all of you, that something needs to be changed. This is not just happening to my student. This is happening to an entire team. I know y'all don't take bullying lightly when it's happening among peers, but when it's happening from a coach that is supposed to be there to be an advocate for these kids, to build them up, to teach them, to coach them, to be better people, to want to swim in college, it's not happening. And it really, really breaks my heart. Belton should be better.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Larry Lancaster. Please state your name and address.
It's Larry Lancaster, 2507 Garden Brook Trail in Belton, Texas, 76513. I know I don't have a lot of time. I know I'm going to get a one-minute warning. So I would just like to build on what Ms. Maddox and also Mr. Rodak had to say. My daughter, as Ms. Maddox mentioned, was one of the fastest swimmers on the team, if not the fastest. I'm not here to brag on that. She broke the school record in the 500 freestyle, which is the longest high school event they swim, and she is not swimming her senior year. In fact, she is now swimming for another team in Austin. She drives herself. She arranged her schedule so she could do that because she wants no part of this environment that exists at Belton. I could go into detail. I was a swimmer in high school myself. I still swim. I just swam a little while ago at UMHB. So I understand when my daughter tells me the sets that they are doing and the things that they are being told, I understand, and I don't like it. And I was the one that encouraged her to swim, but also was the one that encouraged her to quit repeatedly. She had had enough. So what I would like to add is to what Ms. Maddox said, how is it that your fastest swimmers have all quit? Why is that? And the other thing I want to address is Coach Henry has created an environment such that his other two coaches are going along with all of this. If you want to know what's really happening at that pool, don't ask the parents, ask the kids, and ask the other two coaches who have stood by and done nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirsten Lancaster? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Kirsten Lancaster. I live at 2507 Garden Brook Trail, Belton, Texas, 76513. I'm married to that guy that just spoke, and I have to add on to what he said. I, too, am a PE teacher. I'm a former personal trainer. I am a swimmer. I am an athlete. I know about working hard. I know about pushing kids. I know about what it takes to make people achieve things that they think they can't do. That is not what's happening at the high school pool. I will tell you what happened to my daughter, but this story speaks to what has happened to so many swimmers. She started swimming when she was eight. It's a small town. It's hard to get good coaches in a small town. We were really excited to have someone with Pat Henry's resume show up. And then I started hearing things that were so fantastic, I thought, this can't be true, until they started happening to my child. I have a daughter like almost every kid on that team because to be a swimmer, you have to be focused. You're staring at a black line for four hours. She is in the top 10%. She is a striver. She is a doer. She is a worker. She does not like to hear the word no. She pushes herself. She has a moderate amount of talent, but she has become a very good swimmer because of that attitude. She's been told by her coaches, she's lazy. You'd be faster if you weren't so lazy. Why, I don't even bother telling you things. You're uncoachable. She's been told that she doesn't need to worry about her grades. If she was smarter, she wouldn't have to spend so much time studying. It doesn't matter how hard you work to build up your child. When someone tells them that, it breaks something inside of them. My daughter left the swim team August or April 11th of this year, and she was broken. She was physically ill from the amount of stress being put on her by these coaches. And yes, Pat Henry's in charge, but they all sat there and had a part in it. We were fortunate enough to have some connections, and she got an audition with one of the top teams in Austin. The story ended well. She's going to swim in college. They've spent the last four months building her back up. But out of all of those things, my biggest issue is that my daughter and other girls on that team are learning that a man can have that kind of power over them, and they have no power in return. And that's a hard thing for me to fix in her.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda. Did I have one more? I'm sorry. Jeremy, I'm so sorry. Please state your name and address, and our timekeeper will give you five minutes.
All right, thank you. My name is Jeremy Ferguson. I live 413 Hawk Shadow Drive, Temple, Texas. All right, thank you. My name is Jeremy Ferguson. I live 413 Hawk Shadow Drive, Temple, Texas. And much like the other people that have spoken, my daughter is also on the swim team for the high school and the club. My youngest daughter is also on the club team. She's a third grader at Lakewood. And we have been with the club program here for four years now. And we moved here two years ago specifically for the swim program. We lived in Waco. I was board president for the club team in Waco for about four years. And we had some issues with the coaches there, to the point where my daughter was ready to give up on swimming after having done it, swam for, since she was five. We were at a meet in Austin. She got to hang out with the Tiger Shark coaches and really enjoyed it. And so she requested to transfer teams. So we did that. We agreed to do that. My dad and my father-in-law took turns driving her back and forth here six days a week. My wife and I also did that. And we did that for two years from Waco. We drove back and forth six days a week to make sure she could train with the coaches that are here. She has battled injuries, and the coaches have been nothing but understanding because we've communicated with them on what is going on. Matter of fact, my daughter is just now recovering from double knee surgery due to her knees dislocating, and it's just a hereditary thing. But the coaches have been wonderful insofar as checking in on her, making sure that she's doing well, making sure that her recovery is going well, speaking with, you know, the trainers, making sure that we're where we need to be. She battled shoulder injuries. They got her set up, made sure that if she, her shoulder was hurting, she was kicking. It wasn't a problem. If her knees were bothering, she was able to pull. You know, I, they have pushed her, and because of that, she is now getting, you know, interest from a number of Division One schools. And without those coaches, she probably wouldn't have those opportunities. Matter of fact, without those coaches, she probably wouldn't be swimming today. And that's why I'm here, making sure that at least that side, from our perspective, is given. Like I said, we uprooted our entire family to move here so that she could train with those coaches and really hope that it continues to where she can. So, thanks for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that was all of the public comments at this time. And we'll move on to the next portion of our meeting, which is our public hearing regarding our 2019-2020 budget and proposed tax rate. Ms. Jennifer Land.
Thank you, Board of Trustees, Dr. King Cannon, and to you, the public. This is our public hearing to discuss the budget and proposed tax rate for 2019-2020. Thanks to everyone who has participated in this process. But most importantly, thank you to all of the constituents in this process for supporting our students and the education of them. Sorry. The BISD budget is developed in keeping in mind the priorities set forth by the Board of Trustees and the superintendent and administration. The academic achievement, supporting our staff, and ensuring quality facilities are the central theme of our budget priorities. These priorities are in line with the district improvement plan and are designed to ensure that the district maintains high standards in educating our students. As we wrap up the 2018-19 fiscal year and begin a new year today, wasn't it wonderful? And we want to recognize some of the accomplishments that we had during the 18-19 year. We recently received preliminary results for our state's Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, which is known as FIRST. And we, Belton ISD, received a superior rating with a perfect score. And that is based on 2018 fiscal year. And coupled with that, for the 2018 fiscal year, we also had a clean audit report that was conducted by Patillo, Brown, and Hill. And that is also a very good accomplishment. And last but not least, one of the things I wanted to highlight is that we were able to issue in May of 2019 the remaining $19.7 million of the 2017 bond authorization that was passed. Belton has a strong history of having a generous fund balance for the general fund. And our fund balance currently sits at a little more than $32 million. Since 2014, the fund balance to operating expenditures has been on an upward trend, although you see in 2019 a slight drop that's based on estimated numbers. And we are still finalizing the 2019 fiscal year numbers. And it is not uncommon for that to change. And we anticipate actually contributing some dollars to fund balance, and that would make that percentage go up a little bit. A healthy fund balance is good, and it has allowed, has allowed the district to be able to do some capital improvements, as well as purchase some capital assets with the general fund dollars. And again, this year, in the 19-20 budget, we have allocated over a million dollars of fund balance for capital items, including the purchase of buses, the third phase of the furniture replacement at Belton High School, and to assist in some startup costs for Belton Middle School, as well as Lake Belton High School. Enrollment has steadily increased over the years, and we are expected, we are, we are definitely expecting enrollment to continue to grow for years to come. In July of 2019, our net certified, our certified net taxable value came in at a little over $3.7 billion, and that's a 14.68% increase over the same time last year. And we anticipate this growth to continue as well in the future. The Board of Trustees must legally adopt three budgets. The General Fund, School Nutrition, and Debt Service Fund. We start by discussing the General Fund. And during the budget process, we have to make several assumptions in order to estimate revenue. And in the General Fund, we base our local tax collections on the maintenance and operations tax rate of the dollar and six, dollar six cent, 6.83 cents. And we use that figure and apply it to our increased property tax values. And that helps us to estimate what we anticipate receiving in local revenue. And due to House Bill III this year for our state revenue, we are basing our state aid on current year values. This is very different from prior years in which we based it on prior year values. There was what was called a funding lag in, in previous years, but House Bill III made up for that lag. And this does create somewhat of, of some uncertainty and definitely is challenging because the state has to certify property values, and that usually does not occur until January or somewhere in the spring of 2020. So we must continue to monitor where our values are, are coming in and, and are, to see where the state is going to have us end up. Also, the other important factor in estimating our state revenue is our enrollment. We use our demographers' projections. And this year for 1920, we're starting out with a projected enrollment of 12,261. And we use that number to determine or estimate our refined ADA, which we have projected to be 11,402 students. In 1920, we are estimating over 119.7 million dollars in general fund revenue. It's primarily made up of local revenue, and the biggest part of, of local revenue is tax collections. And then the other, the biggest part of our revenue is, is the state revenue. This year, the state burden of district expense, of supporting district expenses has increased to about 65% of total revenue, and that's in our state aid category. And local revenue has dropped to about 32%, with federal revenue contributing 2% of the total anticipated revenue budget for the district. This year, we are proposing a balanced budget for consideration. And what this means is that our expenditures are matching our anticipated revenue. And more than half of our expenses are directly related to classroom instruction. And the, another 20% of our, more than 20% of our expenditures are related to instructional support. And we have, so that brings us to about 75% of the total budget that is related to basically classroom, our students. This depiction of expenditure shows that about 81% of our costs are personnel-related. And this is in line with other school districts across the state of Texas, as well as what we envision here in Belton. Even though we've had some significant changes and some significant revenue infused into our budget this year with House Bill III, we still have been able to maintain the categorical construction, and our budget is still intact. Our tax rate, which determines how much tax revenue will be generated, is shown here. You can see that prior to 2018 fiscal year, the tax rate remained the same for three years. But with the voter-approved bond referendum in 2017, the tax rate increased in 2018 to support that issuance of new debt. And we will, once again, in 1920, have a tax rate change because we are lowering our tax rate. In 1920, we are proposing a tax rate of $1.46.51. That is comprised of an M&amp;O rate of $1.6 cents, 6.83 cents. And that is a 10.7 cent decrease from the prior year, again, as a result of a House Bill III legislation. And our INS rate is moving to 39.68 cents, which is 3.62 cents lower than last year. So our overall tax rate that is being proposed is 13.79 cents less. Our goal here has always been to keep the tax rate as low as possible, while of course, being fiscally prudent. And this year, we are definitely in a great position. You can see here, the average taxable value of a residence in Belton increased by about $13,500. Because our proposed tax rate is much lower, the average residence owner could realize a small, a small drop in the taxes due. Since we know that some homeowners, their values increased, there may not, they may not realize a similar impact. Property tax rates simply are not, did not fall at the same pace that our property values increased. So as property values continue to increase within our rapidly growing district, homeowners may not see a decrease on their property taxes, even in light of our lower tax rate. But we did make an effort in lowering our tax rate. School nutrition is another fund for which the budget must be legally adopted. Once again, we made assumptions regarding revenues here. In terms of local revenue, we based it on meal prices. Reimbursement rates were just released at the beginning of August. So we had to quickly adjust and make some changes. And as a result, the, the adult lunch price increased by 10 cents. But we were able to maintain the same price for our student breakfast and lunch, as well as adult breakfast. Federal revenue increased slightly due to a small increase in reimbursement rates. And we also will continue to have five campuses that provide a specified free breakfast and lunch to all students. And those campuses will remain to be South Belton Middle, Bex, Chisholm Trail Elementary, Miller Heights Elementary, and Southwest Elementary. As you can see, revenues for the school nutrition budget is primarily made up of funding from the National School Lunch Program. The local revenue is the funds that, for, that we collect for, for reduced-priced, as well as full-price lunches and breakfasts. And we are proposing a revenue-short budget for the school nutrition fund simply because they cannot carry more than three months' operating expenditures in fund balance. And we are approaching that limit. The other legally adopted budget is debt service. In developing the revenue budget, we used the 39.68 cent tax rate and applied that to our property value that came in at the 14.68% growth. We also included some support from the state through the existing debt allotment. So as presented here, debt service revenue is generated mostly from tax collections, and the state contributes some funds as well. This budget also includes the stadium revenue bond, which was approved in 2011. So you see a small amount budgeted for some athletic activity. And expenditures are made up of bond payments. And these are semi-annual payments that we must make for bond principal and interests that are required. So the Board of Trustees will be asked to approve the budgets at a functional level, for General Fund, School Nutrition, and Debt Service later tonight. The budget shows spending for public notices as required by Senate Bill 622. And it adheres to a newly-required mandate to show line item expenditures for directly or indirectly influencing or attempting to influence the outcome of legislation or administrative action, or basically what we would term lobbying. And that is mandated by House Bill 1495. At this time, I will entertain any questions or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Land. We appreciate that. It's a, did you have a question? Oh, thank you. Okay. Well, we'll move on to our next item if you're... Next item on our agenda is consent agenda. Does any member of the board wish to have any item pulled for discussion? No? All, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed here? It's a motion by Mr. Norwood. Is there a second? Mr. Taggart, all in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. And then we will move on to superintendent's report.
All right. Well, let me see if I can change the tone of the meeting a little bit. We had a great first day of school, and I want to thank all of our staff for their efforts leading up to today. Their preparation for the new school year was really obvious as we visited campuses this morning. There was evidence of strong systems in place to ensure not only just a first, a great first day, but a successful year and beyond. And I'm really proud of you guys. Thank you. There was great communication to families from our, the pictures are distracting. They're beautiful. And there, there was great communication to families from our campus administrators through Skylert messages and on social media. You guys killed it with your hard work getting ready for the year. And I even saw some videos posted to, by our schools to help parents with procedures, especially at Charter Oak. Our schools were clean. They were neat. They were organized. Oh, go back to that one. This was at Charter Oak, and I asked him how he liked his new school, and he said, "It's pretty good." So that was Cooper. Kindergarten for you. And we saw lots of evidence of our safety protocols in place. Classroom doors were locked. Standard response protocols, systems were posted. There was local law enforcement out assisting, ensuring that everything was running smoothly this morning. And we want to thank the Belton Police Department and the Temple Police Department for all of their efforts and their great communication in advance of the start of the school year as well. They really do serve this community well. There was lots of visual representation of our theme and our district priorities for this year, which Deanna will speak to in just a few minute, few minutes. And it was clear that everyone under... And it was clear that everyone understands, that's cute, the work that was designed for the year and the visuals all over the buildings clearly demonstrated what's important. That's one of our beautiful custodians. It's so sweet. And most of all, the kids and the teachers looked excited and happy. And I didn't see too many tears today, even with our little ones. So it was a great first day and I really want to thank the staff for their work. And I know they're tired this evening and if you all don't mind, I'd like to give them permission to leave whenever they feel like it. And I hear, I can see a thank you. Thank you. They, they were at school before seven o'clock this morning. They've had a long day, so please do what you need to do. Thank you. We appreciate you very much.
We do appreciate you and we all hope you have a great evening. Good night.
Whenever you're ready.
Whenever you're ready.
Today's attendance count was eleven thousand eight hundred ten. Last year, on the first day, we were at eleven thousand five hundred thirty-nine. That's two hundred and seventy-one students more than last year's first-day enrollment. And we did have a number of students who are on the books who didn't show up today, so we expect them to continue to trickle in. And that number does continue to grow and typically peaks out in October just before the snapshot date. And so we expect to continue to grow. If you'll recall, I think Jennifer mentioned it, Templeton demographics estimated that we would have twelve thousand two hundred sixty students this year, about three hundred seventy over last year. So we're well on our way. I might mention, since we're building a new high school, that at the high school level, we had three thousand four hundred ninety-six students this year. That was an increase of ninety-six over the first day last year. And we did have a number of no-shows there today, so I'd expect that to grow as well. At the middle school, we have nearly three thousand students, two thousand eight hundred six students, an increase of about seventy-seven students over last year. And at the, and I can send these numbers to you if you'd like them. At the elementary level, there were five thousand five hundred eight students, an increase of ninety-eight students over last year. So Belton ISD continues to grow and, and we expect to see those numbers increase over the next few weeks. And then finally, I mentioned that the dedication event for Charter Oak Elementary is set for September the twenty-fourth at nine o'clock AM at the school. And Elizabeth and her team will be assisting Jennifer Connor in preparations for that special event and we'll get some more information to you as we get closer. That's it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, we're going to talk about, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the Belton Federal Credit Union Memorandum of Understanding. Presented Grace McDonald and Wayne Carpenter. Thank you so much. I'm sorry.
Bye. Thanks, guys.
Bye. Good night.
Get some rest. I'm Grace McDonald, President of the Belton Federal Credit Union. And I would just like to, excuse me, give you a little brief history of our credit union. Fifty-six years ago, we had thirty-six administrators and teachers who felt a need and saw a need for a financial institution here in our school district. And they began to organize, and we were chartered in February of nineteen sixty-three with those thirty-six people. In nineteen seventy, Mary Harden Baylor, University of Mary Harden Baylor now, asked to be included in our credit union. So our charter was amended to include them. And this, at that time, and it still is, it's open to all employees of Belton ISD and their families. Our board is made up of seven members. Wayne Carpenter, Dorothy Zaka, Ralph Masters, Charlotte Chaney, Darla Kirby, representing the University of Mary Harden Baylor, and Chuck Douglas. We also have a supervisory committee and those members are Cindy Wiley, Dora Martinez, and Mike Anderson. Our office staff is made up of two full-time employees. Our credit union manager is Christie Butler and our assistant is Tiffany Holman. Mr. Carpenter now will give you a little insight of what is going on today in our credit union.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Wayne Carpenter, five oh five East Twenty-Eighth Avenue, beautiful downtown Belton. Farmer HR guy, and it's really my belief that the Belton Federal Credit Union is a very important employee benefit. I've seen hundreds of people helped over the years. It's especially important to your lower-income folks, your auxiliary workers, your bus drivers, custodians, the folks who, if they didn't have the Belton Federal Credit Union, would be at payday lenders and things like that. We have a priority on personnel, personal service. Obviously, credit union by its very nature is a nonprofit. Those board members don't earn a penny for their, the time that they spend. And certainly Grace McDonald spends untold hours helping those ladies run that business. We offer so many services. I hope that you're aware of some of them, but if not, let me just mention a few of those. Certainly, as a nonprofit, we are, we are excellent on terms of our loan rates. We have payroll deduction. We have direct deposit. We have an ATM located in the Gin complex so employees can get their money after hours. And of course, we have that wonderful space that y'all have provided for us in the administration building for which we are very grateful. We loan money for cars, boats, RVs, my favorite motorcycles, and personal emergencies. The Belton Federal Credit Union has helped many, many employees put their kids through college with their educational loans. Our rates are very, very competitive and beat just about anybody around. We feel like that that's a valuable service that makes it better. It's a really rare thing in Texas for a school district to have such a service as what we have here in Belton. Grace's dad was one of the founders way back when, so it's really, pardon me, it's really been a labor of love for her and several of the other board members to keep it going. We also have a special deal for your new teachers, and I know you have hundreds, I don't know how many you have this year, but I'm sure it's substantial. We offer regardless of their current credit status, we will loan up to ten percent of their estimated salary for the year with a twelve-month payback to help those folks get started on the school year. And once you're a member of the Belton Federal Credit Union, you can remain on it forever. Just because you're retired doesn't mean that you cannot use our services. Also, I want to let you know that as board members, according to our charter, y'all are all welcome to become members. And I just happen to have some signup cards with me tonight that, that I will leave with Connie. But in closing, let me say how much we appreciate the support and the cooperation of the district. Dr. Kincanon, who's leaving us, but we, she's been very helpful to keep services going as we moved into the new building. And we hope that we can continue to work to serve your employees and provide a real benefit for the folks here in Belton and the University of Mary Harden Baylor. Thank you. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to try to answer them.
Certainly, just want to thank you, Mr. Carpenter and Ms. McDonald. Appreciative of all that you all have done and just really appreciative of the partnership that we've been able to have over all these many years. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Ms. McDonald's got over twenty years and I've got over thirty years, so we've, we've been around. But thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Well, at this time, the board will, there's a motion, I believe, to approve, vote on the recommend, the MOU as recommended. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Norwood, is there a second? Mr. Flor, all in favor, please, raise your hand. That would be all of us. Thank you. Okay. Our next item on our agenda is some actions regarding administrative employees. Mr. Schiller.
Yes, thank you very much. Tonight, I get the privilege of recommending four new administrators here. So the first one, I'll recommend Samuel Skidmore, Sam Skidmore. And he's, two of his biggest fans are here, too. And if Sam, step on up. Here we go. His wife and his, and his son as well. So two of his biggest fans, I'm sure. And so Sam has a master's degree in education from a Sam Houston State University, bachelor's of science degree from Charlton State University, twelve years in education, six of those years at Belton ISD, has been a teacher, football head track, strength and conditioning coach, assistant athletic director, offensive coordinator while he's here, as well as the head football coach, obviously. So we're privileged to recommend Sam tonight as the athletic director.
Awesome.
I, I want to say it's our privilege to recommend Sam to you this evening. He's done a fantastic job in this community and we appreciate him and know he will serve the community and hold the high vision, the vision of high standards that have been set. And we appreciate you. Thanks, Sam.
I'd just like to say, I guess, five years ago, my son was playing football and came home one day and goes, "You're not going to believe this new offensive coordinator. He's huge," and he yells a lot. And I got to know this young man, and I'm going to tell you what, he is outstanding and I am so proud to be a friend of his and he is going to do us a great job. I'm just very, very happy and very proud to have you on as our athletic director. Congratulations.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Next, I'll recommend Barbara Epperson. Barbara, come up. Is Barbara here?
Barbara's not here.
Nope, she is not here. So she's, as you know, she's Advanced Academic Services Coordinator. Been with us seven years here at Belton ISD, sixteen of those years in education. So we're happy to, to record, recommend her for that coordinator position. Then we have Veronica Russell. Veronica, come on up. Veronica has two master's degrees, one in administration and one in social work, a bachelor's of science degree in biology, pre-medicine, twelfth year in education. She is coming to us from clean ISD, so we're happy to have her with us for assistant principal at South Belton Middle School.
Well, welcome to Belton. Glad you're here.
And finally, we have Kelly Sanders. Kelly is being recommended tonight for assistant principal at Chisholm Trail Elementary, has a master's degree from the UMHB, bachelor's degree from UMHB as well, fifteenth year in education, three years at Belton ISD, and comes to us from Miller Heights Elementary. So excited for her. Thank you all.
Awesome. Take some nice photos and then we'll do some, a little thing called Take Action. Okay, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve as recommended, Mr. Ty Taggart? Is there a second? Ms. Janet Lee is, okay, all approved. All hands, please, shake your hands. It's been a long day. We're, we're all in agreement. That, that passes unanimously. I'm sorry. Okay, our next item is consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the proposed termination of a professional employee's term contract. Mr. Schiller.
So in accordance with board policy, DFBA legal, we are recommending a proposed termination of Patrick Henry's two thousand nineteen term, nineteen, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty term contract tonight and ask for, for y'all to consider that.
Okay, is there any discussion? We will vote, I know that we will, Mr. Taggart will abstain. So all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Is there a motion to approve? I'm sorry.
A motion.
So Mr. Alcoz, set the motion and then second, Mr. Flor. And all approve as recommended by the administration, please raise your hand. Okay, that would be six of us voting for and one abstaining. Next item on our agenda is review and discuss the 2018, 2019 STAR results and campus and district A through F ratings. Dr. Love Smith and Vicki.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, we are here and it's not our STAR results. We are here to discuss the A through F results that have just come in. We want to remind you, we've talked about this several times and we've done a lot of planning along the way. But just as a reminder, we first received a rating as a district in August of 2018. The system does provide a letter grade, rate every district and campus with a letter grade for three domains, student achievement, school progress, and closing the gaps. And this year in August, it would be the first time for our campuses to receive a letter grade rating. Those three domains, student achievement and school progress compromise seventy percent of the overall score and then closing the gaps is the remaining thirty percent. As you may recall, when we discussed last month our STAR results and what had come in, we predicted then that the district would be a B. We did earn, in fact, a B. We earned five points higher than last year. So last year, we were in eighty-three. This year, the district is in eighty-eight. And that, that is some pretty significant achievement for a district this size to move five points in this system, so we're proud of that. Accountability systems are not new. With every system along the way, we have learned where we, our strengths are. We also learn areas to grow. However, it is challenging to take everything within a system and define it as a letter grade. This year, the state has identified, has identified our campuses rather than a meet standard with a letter grade. And so listed in front of you are all of our district's overall letter grades for the 2019 school year. I would note that as Vicki and I compiled this list, we chose to list our schools in order, not alphabetically, but by their low socioeconomic status. Because we think that that is a significant factor and contributor to what an overall letter grade will be and you can draw some instant conclusions from that. With these letter grades, though, I assure you, we're looking past a single letter grade and we will study every bit of the data before us. We will find our strengths because they're there. We will also find areas for improvement. Our campuses have, and principals, I am so glad that they left. They have had a long day. But they have been working tirelessly since the scores started coming in to develop thorough plans. They didn't wait until these scores came out last Thursday to decide what to do. And, and that work and that achievement, I think, was seen today with a successful start of the year. And I think it's going to be a great year for them. They've done a lot of planning. The state has also chosen to give every campus a letter grade for each of the three domains. And again, we have chosen to list our campuses, first elementary, then middle school and high school, all in order of low socioeconomic status. So again, you can see any conclusions you might draw from that. But again, we'll, we will work on and address these in our plans. We also were awarded distinction designations. We were awarded eighteen as a district. What this is, is the state chooses to place every campus in a comparable group. So it finds forty schools that are most like that particular campus by one indicator or another, and then you have the opportunity to compare yourself academically. We, the state compares it in the areas of reading ELA, math, science, social studies, academic growth, closing the gap, and post-secondary readiness. One of the things we encourage is our, our campuses to do is to continuously look at these lists. They change from year to year, so you're not always in the same comparable group of, of campuses. But it is an opportunity for you to reach out to other principals and say, "What are you doing in your area?" They sometimes reach out to us as well and we just learn for improvement. But we have eighteen of those recognitions. We've said it throughout the year and Dr. Kincanon definitely used these words that I'll borrow in, in our press release when the scores came out. But, but our, the A through F system does not measure everything that we do and every opportunity we offer our students. As you can see pictured, we had a hundred advanced play scholars with seven national merit and national Hispanic scholars. We had state recognitions in construction trades, UIL, choir and fine arts. We had middle school students represent us at the state history fair, state and national history fair. We, we won nationals in engineering. We placed in engineering. And we also advanced in our athletics. None of these opportunities, nor the opportunities to be in rollsball parades, patriotic events, to communicate, to conduct community service, are measured in an A through F system. And we can't put a price tag on those for our students. They're invaluable in the success and we are, we are proud of our principals and our campus leaders. Did you have any questions? for me on the A through F? Yes, sir.
I've got a comment. I've been able to experience a lot of interesting things in my two-plus years of being on the board, and a lot of really great things, but I'm going to have to put in my top three things that I'll never forget years after I'm done serving on the board was when the scores started coming, when we started getting the reality of how things were going to kind of work. Standing right there, you and I were visiting, and I saw tears. And that meant so much to me because I know how much you care, and how much you care, and how much we care about our kids. And that makes what we do up here, that made it easy for me to do what we do, which is hard sometimes because I know how much y'all love these kids. So that meant a lot to me.
Thank you. We love our students and we love our leaders. And we have faith in those leaders and will continue to support them every step of the way, regardless of what letter grade is put on them.
Thank you.
I just want to commend the fact that you're going to take the data. That's the greatest strength in the district, and that has always been one of Dr. Kinkanen's most amazing strengths, is her ability, and I know she works a lot with you, Dr. Love Smith, but-
She does.
-to, to take something that can be perceived so negatively and find the strength in it and turn it around to make life better for our students. So I just want to commend you for doing that.
Thank you. I commend her as well. What was done with Southwest, Vicki and I have years of experience in turnaround schools, and it was game-changing for the attitude and the right, the right thing to do for our kids and our staff.
And we found the positive.
And we found the positive.
Lots of-
And we brought them, they're on the team and not scared. And you can't put a price tag on that.
So I went to Southwest Elementary this morning, and I did bus duty and car rider duty, and I loved every second of it. And the kids were all coming in and smiling and happy, and the teachers were there to greet them with big smiles. And you can tell that they're all in this team and they're all in this together, and they really, really want to succeed. I mean, the atmosphere in that school has always been special. Those teachers have always worked so hard and they have significant challenges, but my goodness, what a precious school, what precious families, all walking in. And I just, I loved every bit of that atmosphere. Thanks for all that you've all done.
Absolutely. Well, talking about data and digging deep, I'll move next into our district and campus improvement plan item. This process begins, well, it feels like it's always going because we're constantly evaluating the work we've done and then starting to plan for the new year. And Dr. Kinkanen has always led that charge for us, ensuring that we have a detailed plan to get the work done. Things don't just magically happen, but they're done through hard work and analysis of data. The district and campus plans are part of board policy, so you will need to, we request that you approve them tonight. We began in spring and we work hard to align not only student achievement, but all of our board goals to make sure that in addition to student achievement, which is oftentimes the role I'm in, that you're, we're also working on other areas within the system to ensure that we can accomplish everything we need to do. So what I want to do, because our district plan is rather lengthy, a little over 100 pages, and I'm not going to read to you every targeted initiative that is before you, but I do want to highlight a few things. First of all, goal one. Goal one defines everything we do in terms of implementing and monitoring well-designed processes, long-range planning, and budgeting. As you can imagine, in this school year in particular, we have a lot of preparation for new schools. It's a new territory for us to open a brand-new high school and to convert middle schools and to have a new mascot, and there will be a lot of detailed work to not only ensure the physical building is in place, but all of the opportunities for our students are there. Their dance teams, their magic, their, I almost said the name, it'll be a different one, our band, our fine arts, our CTE programs. I also want to point out that in addition to all the growth that we must address in the new facilities, it is critical that we contract with architects to update the facility's five-year maintenance plan, because we do believe that every student needs to be in a well-taken, well-cared-for and taken-care-of facility. And so in addition to bringing on new ones, we will address issues and develop a long-term plan. Also new in this area for this year, but of particular interest, is our PMS coding. So the state has redefined compensatory education, and they will be providing funding based on census data and where students live. It will be critical for us that we ensure that we have the proper coding turned into the state for those census blocks, as it will vary in terms of the amount of funding that you receive. Do you have any questions on goal one? Otherwise, I'll just go to the next. Yes, sir.
Do we have anything in here specifically around improvements for Belton High School? Like as we get ready to go to Lake Belton High School, right? So I know we just did the furniture, right? But, you know, interior paint job, anything else to help that school feel special?
We're working on the orchestra addition. We've done, we did three-year roof replacement. We've done the three-year furniture replacement. We have done the cafeteria remodel. We've done the library remodel and the digital learning center. But we don't have renovations on the capital projects list. However, I would tell you that we do have some schools on the capital projects list, and I would prioritize those first. And obviously, that's your decision, but I would, that would be my recommendation. There are some other schools that should come first. Okay. I want, I just want to add to that. We, and I want to be clear that we've been very diligent about taking care of Belton High School, knowing that the new high school would come online, and that facility is in really great shape. And so the band hall will get a little bit of a facelift with the orchestra addition. And of course, there are always things we can do, but it's a great facility. And we have worked hard to make sure that we didn't have a brand-new high school with a school that didn't have what it needed as well. And so that's been a multi-year process for us.
Goal two specifically addresses our state achievement in relation to our state student achievement and quality of learning indicators. I think it's important to note, number one, develop a data analysis strategy for the review of student achievement on STAR and implement processes with teachers and identify school-wide strategies for improvement, which include understanding the performance of individual students and plans for advancing them. It's really critical in this new system that we are looking at every student individually. We're also looking at campuses individually. And so what, what is the focus of one campus could be vastly different from the other, another. And so, like I said, our campuses have well-detailed plans, and we'll be working with them individually throughout the year to make sure those are carried through. Also, I would note in this, we have an extensive review, we have extensive resources for our teachers. So we continue to review and discuss curriculum resources in Schoology and Edge of Floria, including released STAR questions and interim assessments. So it's really important, and I will give some props to our CNI department for ensuring that we have the highest-quality resources available for our teachers. They have all been moved into an online platform, Schoology, and will continue to ensure that that system is robust and that teachers have access to what they need and the support that they need. And then near and dear to us as well, and based on a review of years of data, this year, we are implementing a one-way dual-language model of instructional framework of language acquisition for our bilingual classrooms, pre-K through fifth grade. We are implementing dual-language beginning with our pre-K, K, and 1 classrooms, where the majority of their instruction will be in Spanish for our bilingual students. This is the model that is shown and proven to show, to have the best success for these students. And we will present at a later board meeting some more in-depth information on that model. But we've studied it over the last year. Our teachers are very ecstatic about it. We had a parent meeting a week or two ago, and we feel like this is definitely in the right direction for our bilingual students.
Quick, quick thing, just to add addition to that. Curious, has Southwest or any of these schools that are high bilingual had ESL classes for parents offered?
We do have ESL classes for parents. We've offered them through our Title I department. We've had several students attend, I mean, several, several parents, not as many, but Southwest has definitely publicized those for some of our parents.
Were they offered or have been offered at the school itself, like in their own neighborhood? I think that would be very beneficial to explore that, you know?
I think as we, as we make this move and we really see the campus as a bilingual campus, I think we'll find more and more opportunities exactly like that to offer to parents. I thought like there was a nice turnout at the bilingual parent meeting, and our parents are on board with us. So we'll continue to find those avenues. Any other questions for goal two? Goal three, the main goal is to attract and retain high-performing administration faculty and staff who reflect the values of the community, serve as role models, exhibit moral excellence, and are committed to achieving excellence for all students. With this new legislation, there are some important bills that we are, we are looking closely at. And so two of those items specifically deal with House Bill Three and better understanding teacher incentive programs at low socioeconomic schools and mentoring programs for our teachers. We are working, CNI and HR are working together to look at what's in those bills and to really provide some support for our teachers. Also important are our leaders, and I've talked about them a lot, but our investment in them is a direct investment on the campus. And so we have regularly scheduled principal meetings, and in those meetings, we are going to look at data, leadership skill development, focusing on the A through F, just understanding that, and then what are best practices in regard to instruction. And again, it's important, we, in those meetings, we will have our principals, assistant principals, CNI department, and instructional coaches. Any questions on three? Goal four, goal four is all about our safety, making, ensuring that we have safe and supportive school environments to ensure security of our students. Again, there are some external players, partners, that we are going to be looking at and making sure that we're doing what is cutting-edge and best research for safety. First is to fully study Senate Bill 11 and to understand what's coming out of that and the mental health care that's needed because safe environments are safe inside and safe for kids, not just physical safety. But we'll also be partnering with the Texas School Safety Center to ensure that we're implementing threat assessments and looking for ways to keep our campuses secure. And then also, I wanted to point out, our third partner is CASL. We're doing a lot with social-emotional learning, the Momentus Institute, and the CASL organization to make sure our students feel safe.
We submitted the COPSS grant in May for threat assessment. And should that come through, that will provide a director of threat assessment and some really awesome work with kids that we're excited about. And we should know by the end of September.
Goal five talks about our, and promotes our shared partnerships. And in this goal, I really want to point out some work that our communications department leads and does an excellent job with. And that's to capture and promote innovative classroom instruction stories that feature and celebrate teachers leading engaging activities or student learning opportunities. It's really about what's happening in the classroom every day. We have some outstanding teachers that are pouring their heart into kids, and to be able to share those individual stories is important in telling the story of Belton. Also to be, to communicate clearly with our parents about new middle and high school boundaries. You heard the presentation tonight with Mr. Morgan, it's hard to not say Coach Morgan. You heard it from Mike. And to really make sure that we support parents through that process because it is challenging. Any questions on five? And then finally, goal six is to ensure that we comply with all state and federal guidelines. And I think in that, the most important work is that we continue to strive to meet the all accountability standards, to look at every system, whether it's the state accountability, A through F, STAR data, PBMAS, and just see what, what work needs intentional work and where our strengths lie. Next, we want to point out our priorities. So several years ago, we, Dr. Kinkanen and our team, we met and we really decided that we wanted to conceptualize what happens in all of the work that we do and really make it something that would ensure, and we could design a system that would keep our team working together in the same direction for a common purpose. And that's hard when there's so many things going on. And so we've outlined four priorities. They're very similar from last year that really will outline the work. These priorities are shared with our new teachers. They're shared with our administrative team. Our administrative team then shares them with each of their campuses. What we found in the last two or three years in this approach is it is really keeping us all focused and on the same page with what's important. This year, to this work, we also added targeted professional development. Like I said, to do great work, our leaders need support, and this training equips them with the knowledge to meet every goal we've set for them. And so we'll continue to partner with them in this journey to excellence. Do you have questions for me in regard to our district campus plans? They are all online, and they're a continued work in progress.
Yeah. Sorry, you were going way too fast for me, but-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, no, no, no. Yeah, I mean, your pace was fine. I just didn't slip my question in in time. So back on goal two-
Yes, sir.
Right? We talk about the profile of a graduate, and, but we talk about it specifically in reference to Lake Belton High School, right? I mean, I would really like to see us do that district-wide and, or at least high-school-wide, right? Include both high schools, right? What do we, as a community, expect from a graduate of Belton ISD, regardless of which high school that you come from, right? So I definitely would like to see that language changed to include both high schools. So I don't, I don't, I don't know what we have to do there, Sue, but-
That's fine. Jill Ross has already reached out to begin to work on that for Lake Belton High School, and certainly it can be done for both, or the board might choose to do that in a team-building session. That's your, obviously, your choice.
And then, I mean, I got into some of the weeds. I did read the 180-plus pages of-
Thank you.
-district improvement plan. I've got it all marked up right here. So, you know, I would like to see us get, from a staff quality recruitment and retention, right? So I'm on page 10 of the, of the district improvement plan, right? I would like to see us implement some kind of measurable objective of satisfaction, right, that we can compare year over year. I mean, I think we're doing, we're doing a lot of great things, right? And so this is in the spirit of how do we get to the next level, right? And so is there, is there something measurable that we can actually compare, right? A number that we can get to, to compare year over year, to try to grab satisfaction based on school campuses, based on the three different levels, based on the district as a whole. That's more than, I don't know, again, it's just more measurable, right? And none of those metrics are, are really easy to come up with or, you know, mean a lot necessarily, but you carry, you carry them year over year and you can actually compare. And so I'd be more than happy to kind of sit and help with that, if we want to do something like that.
I want to comment on that. There are some tools out there. I think Tasby even has some. But I'll tell you, your biggest indicator of satisfaction with your employees is your turnover rate. And you're sitting at a 13.3% turnover rate, which is well below the state average. So you have a high level of satisfaction in your employees in this district. But certainly, you can look at, you break it down any way you want.
Yeah. I mean, just to be clear, I'm not questioning the satisfaction, right? I think we're doing a great job, right? So this is like, how do we continue to, you know, shoot for the stars, right? Yeah. And then from a, from a recruiting standpoint, right, I mean, one of our challenges, it looks like, is, you know, recruiting diversity talent, right, and diverse teachers into the classroom. And so, and you know, I'd love at some point to talk about, well, how are we doing that today and what is specifically- that today, and, and what is specifically do we plan to do to do that differently going forward, so we can really advance that particular goal?
Any other questions? Well, I do have a comment. I just wanted to just thank Dr. Kinkanen and her team, 'cause I know a lot of work went into this district improvement plan. Uh, this is well-thought-of and just well-put-together, and I know you spent a lot of sleepless nights and lots of hours with the team putting this together, so certainly appreciative of all the hard work that you and your team have done to put this together.
I wanna, um, say that this work has been carefully designed for this school district. So been doing a lot of design-thinking work this summer, and we, um, we spent a lot of time talking to campus principals and curriculum staff, digging into the data, thinking about kids, thinking about the work, and we have been very thoughtful. We could've designed a number of ways to attack the wor- the work, and this is the way we chose to do it. Um, it's very thoughtful, and it's very clear, it's very process-oriented, um, meaning that you're bringing people along with you as you do the work. And so, um, I'm proud to present this district plan with you. I'm proud of the staff that has developed it, um, all of our, uh, office, central office staff and all of our campus staff who do a remarkable job, and they have done a fantastic job of planning your year.
Thank you so much. So at this time, we will, uh, undertake a motion to, um, approve the district plan as presented. We have a motion from Mr. Taggart. Is there a second? Dr. Montgomery, all in favor, please raise your hand. That is approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next awesome thing we get to do is, uh, talk about adopting the budget, uh, and, um, for the 2019, 2020 year. Ms. Lann.
Yes, so the 2019-20 budget for the general fund, the school nutrition and debt service has been presented and for your consideration and approval. So, uh, the anticipated budget, including revenues and expenses, they've been reviewed at previous meetings as well as earlier tonight, and the proposed budget is presented in the packet. We recommend adoption of the 2019-20 fiscal year budgets for general fund, school nutrition and debt service.
Thank you for all of the work that you've done. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to approve as presented? We have a motion from Dr. Montgomery, a second from Mr. Norwood. All approved, please raise your hand. That passes. Thank you. Okay, fun stuff. Let's adopt a, a great tax rate for the next year school year. Ms. Lann, you're up again.
Yes, the tax rate has been presented according to the State Comptroller's Truth and Taxation Guidelines. The district has published the proposed tax rate in the required meeting notice, and the hearing has been held. The ordinance to set the tax rate is the method, is the method used to record the board's decision and will be documented in the minute, minutes. I recommend approval of the tax rate with the language specified.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
I just wanna ask a clarification on the language, right? Because when we were doing the public hearing earlier, right, it was slide thirty-nine. I remember which slide it was, right? You had the, the house last year and the house this year, right? And I think the, that the taxes payable by that house would be like eleven dollars less, right? And so I get that values went up, right? But the taxes that that household is paying is going down. Yet the language we have to use, right, says an increase, right? So just for everybody's benefit, can you just kinda clarify the, the language that we have to use?
Yes, the language is based on the amount of revenue we will actually, we are anticipating to receive based on those property values. Even though our tax rate decreased because we, our tax values or property values went up-
Right.
-they went up by a rate or, they went up more than our rate decreased. So we're going to, in essence, collect more in tax revenue for the nineteen-twenty fiscal year. So in aggregate or in total, the revenue is going to be more. And it goes back to the slide I think we talked about with the new property, how much new property we have in the district. So we're collecting more revenue.
Okay.
Good question.
That, that was a good question, Chris. I will tell you that that has actually come up in years past, and, uh, very same situation. The really key here is that our tax rate went down, and we need to really focus and celebrate that. That's an awesome piece of news for our community and for all of our retail folks in this particular area, so we're gonna celebrate the tax rate going down. Okay, so at this time, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Taggart, is there a second? Ms. Janet Lee, all in favor, please raise your hand. Yes, so-
Thank you.
Point of order, thank you.
You need to read the recommendation.
Says the-
Oh, yeah. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of one-point-four-six-five-one, which is effectively a two-point-seven percent increase in the tax rate.
Thank you. So that was a motion by Mr. Taggart. And there was a sec, there was a second?
Oh, it was me.
It was you. It was you. It was a second by Ms. Lee. All in favor of Lauren's tax rate, please raise your hand. That is adopted. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, uh, we're winding down. Our next item on the agenda, issues, concerns for future agenda or administrative reports. Anything on this end?
I would just like to make a comment.
Absolutely.
Thank you. When I sit here and listen to all this, I just feel a lot of appreciation for what you've done for us. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Issues, concerns for future agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Um, so obviously, I'm very excited about the social-emotional learning. I think that's a great thing, and I know that the district's working hard on it, and I know it's very different in a classroom, and I appreciated all of the updates last year that, that we received. I would love to see the data that goes on with that, and I know that you've collected some, um, and, and it's probably been too premature to share it with the board, but I think that that would be a great thing to share with the board.
Thank you. Well, I wanna share some, uh, future events that are coming up. Uh, on August twenty-first, we have Meet the Tigers Athletic Event, six PM at BHS Gymnasium. August twenty-sixth, the board has team building at five o'clock. Um, September second is Labor Day Holiday. Belton ISD schools and offices are closed. Um, we have, September fourth, we're gonna have a farewell event for Dr. Kinkanen at four, uh, four to six, a location to be determined. On the fifth of September, middle school, um, open house events at five-thirty. September sixth, first home varsity football game, senior night for football and cheer. September tenth, Meet the Teacher Open House for high schools, BHS and New Tech, beginning at five-thirty. And on the fifteenth of September, it's Back to School Community Prayer Service, Service, Crossress Church at three PM. We're gonna confirm the time for you, and then on September the sixteenth, we have our next regular board meeting. And with that, we are adjourned.